We've got six o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. Charlotte, if you would take role for us? Okay. And if you ever -- everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Father in heaven, we bow our heads at the beginning of this city council meeting and thank thee for the privilege of being here tonight. We're thankful for this Christmas season. We celebrate the birth of Christ. We're thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy in our land. We're thankful to be involved in the political process and consider items of importance tonight for our community. We ask a special blessing on Beverly that her operation will go well in her recovery. We miss her presence tonight. We hope that everyone in our community will enjoy a great Christmas and New Years and that we will do what we can to improve the quality of life in our community. These things we thank thee for and pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Carl. Has the council had time to review the agenda for this evening?
I have.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I would second that.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, thank you. Now is the time for public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Sharon Bowen, and I'm here to thank all of you for the hard work you did throughout the year and to wish you a very Merry Christmas. And I also want to say that the square is absolutely exquisite. The people that worked so hard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any other comments? Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I have had probably 20 people say, "Tell you guys to speak up," as well as the people that come up here. They cannot hear you. They can hear John Wells and Nancy, and they said they can't hear you. And they said, "There's no sense having a TV program if we can't hear you." So I'm just going to tell you Merry Christmas to all of you. And you know I'll tell you if I don't like something.
Thanks.
Make sure I speak up. I'm David Tolan from Thrive Allen County. I was late in submitting a request, which is that Thrive is in the process of attempting to purchase the building at 9 South Jefferson, which is where the Treasure Chest Flea Market is. We are going to be putting our offices primarily on the second floor of that building, as well as having a small reception area and conference room downstairs. The Treasure Chest Flea Market is going to remain on the ground floor, but we're going to be spending about $300,000 on this project to renovate this building. We have -- we are going through the process with USDA Rural Development to get a loan. And as part of that, they require that we have a certificate of support, which says that the City of Iowa supports this project, that there's no financial obligation, there's nothing beyond simply this pro forma requirement. I don't know whether you have this in front of you, but I -- okay. So it's very straightforward. It's just one of these things we have to do. And again, I apologize that it was not gotten to staff in advance. I'd be happy to have -- take any questions. Well, I didn't get it to them till Friday, so it was my mistake.
Thanks, David.
I had a chance to look at it. It seems pretty straightforward, but Thrive is asking, just basically saying the city's okay with their renovations and moving there. You know, I think we're doing good on the housing down there, and I don't think this would be a big detriment to the housing situation down there because it's not being used as it is as housing. It doesn't run off local business, which would be one of, you know, the concerns, keeping the square kind of quaint. I would make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Is this all there is to the agreement, this one page? This is what we are?
I would second that. And I think it's great that that business is also going to still be a part of that building. So you're not only are you not running off any businesses, you're keeping that business there as well, so.
What will you do to the offices that you have now?
Thrive actually doesn't own the building where we are now. It's owned by Nick Loman, and he's actively working to sell that building. And we're assisting him in trying to find a tenant for, whether it's for him, if he's still the owner, or for the new buyer.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah. Our problem is we've outgrown that space. It was intended for five employees, and we have nine full-time employees plus volunteers. And so we are just bursting at the seams.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any other public comments at this time? All right. Thank you. Has the council had time to review the consent agenda for this evening?
I'd make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Roundtable, IMA, 54 Highway Hospital Curve Discussion.
This item is on the agenda to give the council an opportunity to think about the options that might be available to make any changes to the hospital curve before we get any more information on this project. And I -- Corey provided some maps for you, so you can kind of see what options there are. We've heard a number of comments from people in the community saying, "Is the city going to do anything? If so, what?" And what you see on this hospital curve is a long, straight line that if you were to change the alignment of the road, what it would -- what that would kind of look like. And there's a second line that kind of parallels the curve of the road. It's kind of goes through the existing parking lot. That line is just a suggestion of what we might do if we decided to just lower the elevation of the bank on the south side of the road, because there's a three or four-foot elevation difference there. And that's one of the options. Straightening out the road may or may not gain much of anything. I mean, the curve itself is adequate for the posted speed limit there. And if we did make a significant change in the alignment, I'm not sure that it would adjust the speed limit any, and it would take a big chunk out of the developable property there. It would also leave some property on the north side of the road. Then you would wonder, "Okay, what do we do with that?" But there is an option of changing the elevation of that piece of property that borders the road, so that it would increase the visibility. So what I'd like to do is just have some discussion comments from council members. If you want to move ahead with some kind of proposal, have an engineer look at this. The other questions involve who would be responsible? Who would foot the bill? And at what point would this be considered formally? Because these are just discussions. This has not been presented by the developer to the planning commission or to code enforcement yet, so we don't really have much detail at this point. But if we're going to require something, then we need to hear that from the council and consult an engineer, get in touch with a developer, say, "How would this impact the proposed development?" And then we can include it in the planning process.
Carl, on average, I know that we talk a lot about hospital curve, and I know it's probably one of the more dangerous areas in town, but how many recs do we actually see there? And that's what I'm thinking. Before we go spending a lot of money and changing a lot of development plans, I just, I mean, I don't think that there's really as risky as we're making it out. I know there's also some talk about turning it into a three-lane, and that would be of more interest to me, traffic study-wise, than to spend a bunch of money to lower the elevation or to try to straighten it. I have some issues with the proposed three-lane as well, and part of that deals with the bike lane, because you do have houses that have to back up into this traffic. But I think, you know, with a traffic study on 54, we could figure out if that's feasible and would solve some of the problems. I just don't know about spending a lot of money, particularly if it's going to be city money, to knock down a wall. That really isn't necessarily going to solve the problem because of the curve. You're still going to have bad visibility if you're trying to pull out there. You're not going to get great visibility now. And instead, we've either forced the developer not to build where they want to build. There's some talk about a housing addition maybe on that portion. Still up in the air. And again, I just, I haven't seen the recs, and I'd like to see kind of studies on how many recs do we really have there. We know we need to do some things with crosswalks. Obviously, we need to put in some signage, probably something like we have on the old highway that were for crossing traffic. But again, I don't know how much I really want to put a ton of money into solving a problem that's, you know, I'd rather fix, you know, limited funds. I'd rather fix Kentucky than spend a bunch of money on 54.
Why don't we get an estimate of what, take the concrete wall down and do, it looks like what, at most it's probably 10-foot where they would be grading back, and find out what the cost is?
I agree with that. I think it would make a big difference in doing studies right now and looking at archival data as far as how many accidents have been there in the past. It's a good idea, but at the same time, we're completely changing the landscape of that area right now with adding in potentially new housing units and the grocery store and cars pulling in and out of there. I walk down that curve quite a bit, just because I like to go down there and see what's going on with the hospital. And if you stand back and look at the, just the eclipse of that curve there, if you took down 10 to 12 feet, I think it would make a huge difference. And if that's something we decide, that, my opinion would be, we foot that bill. We don't make a decision to change something and then ask somebody else to pay for it. That's just my two cents on that.
I would, I think you've mentioned it here, but KDOT is not willing to basically spend any money on this, right? And it's 54 Highway.
Well, not, it's not probably a matter of whether they're willing to. They don't have an obligation in the first place. So if there's, if there is a change to be made, then it would be up to the city to do it. Or if it was something that was required as part of the development, then we could put that on the shoulders of the developer. But if it's just something that we want to do to improve an existing situation, that would fall most likely to the city.
Yeah, I think it would be pretty difficult, as hard as it is to get developers to develop, to make them swallow that, though.
Well, at least lowering the grade probably would have little, if any, effect on the proposed development. It would improve the visibility some.
Is that something that our guys could do themselves? Or is that something that we would have to hire outside?
I'm thinking that would be something we'd have to hire a contractor to do.
I'm also curious on what that would do to the landscape there as well. I mean, that retaining wall is there, holding up something, but when you grade it back, you're going to start changing runoff. You're going to have to start doing some studies into that as well. I mean, the retaining wall, it's, you're going to grade it back, but into what? You still have 10 feet higher. I don't know if it's worth the money for, you know, there are other problems that we're going to have to address there. A stoplight might be the better of the two issues. If it really becomes an issue with that much more traffic, there are other areas that you can either stoplight or change the way that people get in and out of that area. You know, maybe narrowing or changing some of the street layout might be more effective so that you don't have to turn out into the hospital curve. Again, slowing the traffic down might be just as effective as well.
And the crosswalk. I mean, installation of a crosswalk so that we know that there is a safe place to cross the street. I mean, if you can go and push the button and stop traffic like you do on State Street with that crosswalk, you know, that makes a big difference.
Is it our discretion as to where we put stoplights on the state highway? Is that something KDOT would get the final say on?
That's something the city could propose to KDOT and see if they would allow it.
That's a good idea if they would allow it. I think that takes care of a lot of issues.
I think an engineering study would answer some of these questions, and we may decide that it's certainly not worth the money to spend in it. As an engineering study and knowing what money we're talking about, I think that's the first step. And then after that, we can talk to the developer and see what he has to say, if it's a big, if it makes a big change for them, well then, I mean, I just think we ought to do something rather than saying yes or no. I just, let's study it.
And it might be nice to have those numbers from the chief about numbers of recs or incidents that they have over there. I mean, obviously, that's going to change some, but still, when you have the hospital there, you did have traffic in and out of the hospital and, you know, people coming and going. So it might be nice to have those numbers as well.
Yeah, slowing the traffic down would be good, because kids aren't going to say, see a crosswalk, a block down the road and say, "Oh, let's go there." They're just going to cross wherever it is. So slowing the traffic down would probably be the better option anyway.
And again, with the traffic study, I'd like them to even look at formally the idea of the three-lane. I have some big reservations, again, with the way it was proposed when we talked to, his name is slipping my mind, when we had the joint meeting with the school. David Mark Fenton, you know, he proposed a bike lane maybe on either side, and that one gets me really, really nervous on the highway. But the idea of three-lane didn't necessarily make me nervous, right? So there's some good and bad in that proposal. And I mean, I think that needs to be one of the things we look at, because that one's cheap paint versus bulldozing and leveling and grading.
I would agree to wanting to talk about that a little more. Basically, we're just extending the two-lane on the square out to the edge of town.
How much of the funding do we use? Is one of those deals where you lose something you were spending anyway?
Oh, really? So--
We might need that.
Yeah, that's, we did not know that one. So as Corey said, we'd lose some of our KDOT funding for that road.
There's a lot of trucks on that curve that use both lanes when they go around it. So we want to keep that in mind.
Okay, before we hear from what David looks like he wants to say, could we hear from the other council members, Sandy and Bob?
Well, I see we got a 70-foot road.
Could you get closer to the mic, please?
We got a 70-foot road, and I see a semi trying to turn into a 40-foot road. I see a problem with the traffic.
Are you talking about going from four to three when you're saying that?
From east to west.
Is your mic on?
It should be.
That's west to east.
No, it's on.
I see a problem, because that semi's going to have--
Which corner is that?
That's going to cause the traffic--
Going on the second street.
Second street.
Yeah. Something's going to have to be done there at least, at least there. An accident sure is going to be. I'm not, I don't need no traffic today, tell me that one. Semis sometimes they have to have a little bit of slaking. We should have slaked it to the left lane.
There's a semi on the picture. You can look where he came from.
Yeah. He's going to be in the left lane. The rear end of his truck is going to be in the left lane.
But if we're talking about loading and unloading, there are clearly easier ways for them to go right down Second Street over this direction. And that would be up to the developer on how and where they're putting their loading, unloading. That could be up to them, then, to fix that curve. But if you look at this guy coming from west to east, if he needed to unload towards the back, that would probably be the easier route for trucks, right? Rather than him curving onto Second, if he turned onto whatever this is, this little triangle here. Is that for--
He'd have a trouble on Madison. He'd have some trouble there on Madison, but--
He'd have, he'd have trouble on Madison. From a 40 to a 50.
No, but if you have one that's standing around somewhere, I'd love to. I mean--
I don't know.
Sandy, what do you, what are your comments?
I think we should have an engineering study done. Just start there. But I'm also in favor of keeping the highway four lanes. I don't like three lanes. I don't like the bicycle routes on either side of it. I think I like the four lanes. I, personally, I don't think the wall's a problem, but I'm not an engineer. I don't know how it would be with the parking lot of it.
How's GNW feel about it?
I don't know that GNW has an opinion on the wall itself, because their property is farther to the south. So when we refer to the developer, it's actually multiple developers. You have GNW, which has one parcel, and then there's the parcels that are now controlled by Iowa Industries, which is basically everything else other than the Medical Arts Building. So just a couple of things to consider. When I was here in July asking for this type of study to be done, it was with the idea that we have a project that's moving forward quickly. It's, and at the time, there was a lot of resistance to doing that study. And now we're at December. This is the only council meeting in December, so it'll be January before things get moving. And you've got GNW planning to start construction in April. Looks like the Iowa Industries portion of this project is on a similar timeline. So when we're talking about engineering studies, those tend to take a fair amount of time, and you're talking about impacting when people can start construction. And we're talking about millions of dollars of development. Second point would be that the, you know, from an attractiveness perspective, you're talking about having residential units right next to US 54. It's a lot better to be an occupant of a residential unit that is set up over the highway as opposed to being right on it. Now, that's a different question than what you're talking about, but it makes those apartments a lot less, I think, attractive if they are right there at the same grade. It's nice to have that buffer where you're up and away from it. So that would just be food for thought for the council.
What do you think about that corner?
Yeah, well, you know, what GNW talked about when they were here last week was that they would probably bring their trucks in on Madison. So from the, they'll come in from the south, and there'll be a road in between their store and the Medical Arts Building. And then they will turn to the east and back to the loading dock. So--
So they're going to be a block over there?
So they're, I can't. So it's, what GNW discussed was that they would have trucks probably come in from the south right here along the west wall of the Medical Arts Building, and that they would then turn east towards Second and back up into the loading dock. So there would have to be some sort of access road just on the north side of the Medical Arts Building. But this has not been engineered at this point. I agree that this corner is a problem. You know, that's a tight radius if you're talking about semis, so if they want to come in that way, that's got to be figured out. But I also know, I also know that the MRI that is on a semi comes, has been coming in there for years. So I don't know how they do that. I don't know if they come from the south or if they come from the north, but they park that, you know, right by the Medical Arts Building.
David, I wanted to hit on your timeline about what you're talking about. That's kind of basically putting a roadblock in your timeline, or the developer's timeline. We talked about a site plan that would be more conducive to what the city needed for, as far as infrastructure changes. Was there any movement on that?
Their, GNW's engineers are working on site plans and all of the things that will be required as part of the permitting process. So, yeah.
Because we may, before they lay the first stone, so to speak, we may have to change sewers, you know, gas lines, stuff like that to accommodate them anyway. So I don't really think that necessarily us hem-hawing around about the engineering is holding us up.
What we talked about before was an engineering traffic study. And a traffic study cannot be conducted until we get the information from the developer.
And it may even be that, once we get the site plan from GNW, obviously, they're already thinking about these issues and addressing these issues. They know they've got to get semis in there. They know what they're dealing with. So these might be things that potentially are going to be addressed in their site plan anyway. So, you know, it might not even be anything that we need to worry about.
Well, there is a lot, though, that we do know about traffic. For example, the, on the preliminary sketch done by the county, there's 100 spaces for the GNW lot, parking lot. We know that. We know that for each 10-unit building, there will be 15 parking spaces. You know, these are, these are things that we know, and that's why we wanted to try and get all this in process several months ago. But I do think, you know, on something like an engineering study, looking at the grade, that's going to take a couple of months, I would assume. If I'm, if I'm wrong on that timeline, let me know, but probably won't get started till January. So let's say it's middle of January, so middle of February, middle of March then, and they want to start construction in April. That's a good type.
A good engineering study on grade, though, wouldn't be a good engineering study if it wasn't too grade yet, though. I mean, the hospital's just recently, I mean, in the last couple of weeks, completely down, and there's still a basement there, so.
Joel, would you have any, any comments on the length of time it would take for an engineering firm to assess that grade? Maybe I'm oversimplifying it, but when I'm looking at what I think needs to be done there, and again, I'm not--
there, and again, I'm not, I'm speaking independently from how this might impose upon the design for these, these structures, because the way I envisioned it was a slight grade back up to where we are, which would then keep those structures still elevated. But then again, you know, I'm not an engineer. I could be completely oversimplifying that. But Joel, what do you know about engineering and timelines for that?
A few things occasionally. I think what we need to do is, this, this study has gotten, has changed flavor a little bit, and we need, the more information we could give an engineer, and the more clear we can be about what we want, the faster that engineer could respond. I also think we could probably get this expedited. I don't think, I mean, it could take two months if we let somebody drag it out, but I think we could probably get it done a lot quicker than that if we lean on them. And that happens every week, so I'm not too worried about that. If we need it done, well, I think we can get it done.
I don't think we need a traffic study. Traffic's going to be what it's been in the past. And then we're going to have the additional grocery store. So I don't think we need a traffic study. I just think we just need a quick engineering study. And there's different classes of engineering studies. You just need one that gives you a good idea, you know, plus or minus 20% of what it's going to cost and what it's going to look like. So I don't think it should be, it shouldn't be a long-drawn-out traffic study, or study. Something quick.
Looking more for an...
Yes.
Yes. I started my study. Depending on the view of this, you want to change.
And then give you an idea of what it's going to cost.
Well, the challenge in dealing with this at this point is we just don't have enough information. And if the development proceeds in two stages, one, the grocery store, two, the apartment complex, you really can't start with engineering work without having the knowledge of how they're going to propose their layout. So are my, my thought here in bringing this up now is that if we could get some ideas from the council on any changes you want to make at this curve, that would help expedite the process until we get actually some detail from the developers.
It sounds like the only considerations we've given here are potentially changing that eclipse on where the wall is or, and stoplight. That's, seems to be that we, the only thing we've all considered.
I mean, we could, we could wait on considering this until we get some kind of formal proposal from the developers and then commission an engineer to kind of analyze it for us.
Yeah, I think if this is something that we believe is important to the city, it shouldn't really matter what the developers want to do. If we think that we have an issue here with this curve, we should move forward with a solution to that, and that should be independent of what we think the developers are going to do. Because again, we, while we, we've got to be careful expediting things, because when you hurry and you, you miss things and you look at them in hindsight, you're going to say, gosh, we rushed through this, and now we've made this mistake that we shouldn't have made. We've got to be careful of delaying the progress of the development. But just to circle back around, if this is something we're, we think's important, we should move forward in acting on it.
I disagree. The red line is that... Where's that going to take?
The red line are what the limits of, well, your colors might be a little bit different than mine. There is kind of a green line that goes down East Street. I believe that may have been the center line at one point of the right-of-way, but...
He's the one on the curve. Talking about right behind the wall.
Oh, that was, that was just a suggestion of what, if we decided to take out the retaining wall and slope that back, it would probably only go back that far.
So you would just gradually do a gradual slope up so where that property is still up higher, but there's a gradual slope, not just that wall.
So it'd give you a little bit better visibility going around the curve, and it would just taper it back.
Well, it seems to me, then, that we should go ahead and move forward with that and see, you know, how feasible is it, you know? Is it going to even solve any issues? I mean, I don't think we need to wait. We need to find out.
Yeah, we should look into having an engineer assess that at the same time. Let's reach out to KDOT and see what kind of resistance we might meet on trying to put a, some type of signal in there. I think a signal would, yeah, a signal would solve a lot of problems there.
So we had a conference call last week with AMEC engineers and asked for a proposal from them to consider. I believe we listed most of the same things you've brought up here tonight, and that would probably run us about $5,000.
And they'd come up with a rough cost of...
Yeah. They would give us an estimate, just based on how much dirt there is there to move.
Which fund does that come out of, the $5,000 estimate?
Probably out of our special projects fund.
And I think that that land, though, I think keeping it sloped up potentially is going to be better. I wouldn't want to have, you know, an apartment complex or a duplex right on the highway, right? So if it was, you took that and did a gradual slope up. If it's not going to, if you're not going to lose too much of the...
Yeah, I don't, I think you would either have to leave it the way it is or do a gradual slope, because the cost to take out, and that's not something that the, this sounds like the developers want anyway, but the cost to take out that much earth, you know, you're talking a lot of money, so.
How far is GNW going to set off there? How far back do they say?
They'll front on First Street. So if you can picture where the, the front parking lot is of the old hospital, it was on the west side of the building, their, their building will be right up at the sidewalk and, of First Street, and hopefully it'll be a wider sidewalk than what's there. And then their parking will be on the south side. So that's in their development, or their, their contract with the county. So it's intended to be more pedestrian-friendly, you know, not having a sea of cars in front, but rather putting them around to the side, so it'd be respectful of the neighborhood and so forth.
So it would be nice to have some sort of a crosswalk there anyway for people wanting to get across the street to go to the grocery store and the kids come, you know, to and from school.
That, that island right there, it was straight west of the front of the hospital. I see kids, I get coffee at Casey's every morning. I see kids run across that every day, like groups of them. So that is like the most dangerous spot on that road to pass, or to cross, too, I think.
If I might ask, you know, is there data that says that the hospital curve is significantly more dangerous than any other intersection that has a, or area that has a comparable car count? Because...
See, and that's why I said we need to get some numbers from the chief of police, find out what, you know, what those numbers are. How many accidents have there? What kind of calls do they get there? But I still think it's important that we add some sort of crosswalk over there because we're going to have a different kind of pedestrian traffic. We do have the school kids. If there's a grocery store, there are going to be people walking over there. I just, I think that's important as a safety measure to, to add that crosswalk, whether we do anything or not with the road. If we've got a safe place for people to cross, that solves a lot of the issues.
And my understanding from talking with Chief Warner is that his issue is a crosswalk and that the accident data doesn't actually bear out that this is a lot more dangerous than any other place. There seems to be a perception than it, that it is, but in terms of actual data, that's, that's not, it's really not that, that much more dangerous. So I, you know, I just encourage the council to consider getting that data before, you know, we go into engineering on a problem that doesn't exist.
Then that's kind of what, what I was thinking, too, whenever I said, you know, before we spend a lot of money to either take down a wall on a problem that may not exist, whenever we have limited amount of funds, you know, I'd rather pour, if we're talking about streets that we need to fix that are probably more dangerous, it's probably Kentucky. It's probably Kentucky that's narrow and that doesn't have lights and that has the new hospital up there. Yeah, but, excuse me, but we have a, as David's mentioned several times, we have a $7 million development, right, going in at this location? So I think we need to prioritize what we're doing at this location, solve this problem. That way, we're not looking back in five years and saying, we didn't take something into consideration. I agree, the first step is, is studying this and diving into it and getting the data, but that, I mean, our focus should, should still be on Madison first, Second Street, and probably Kentucky last after that.
Where's the crosswalk that we're talking about exactly?
There isn't one.
I know, but we're talking about putting one in. Where exactly? On this curve or...
There isn't a proposal.
We don't really know.
Figuring out the, I mean, we need to figure out the best place that we can put a crosswalk that's going to, you know, I mean, and maybe that money, I don't, what does it, what does it cost to put in a crosswalk? What kind of money are we talking there? Are we better off spending money that might go to engineering and tearing down a wall, putting that money in on a crosswalk? And is there any funding from KDOT on that kind of stuff?
No funding from them.
What did it cost to do the light on North State Street for the bicycle trail?
Flashing yellow all the time, too, by the way. Well, I guess the first thing we need to do is get police data, then? Do you guys...
That's a good start.
I think that would be helpful so that we know what kind of issue we're even dealing with. I mean, we know there's lots of kids that are crossing. We've had people tell us that. We know that's going, that there's going to be more people crossing, so maybe that is the answer, is a crosswalk. Lower the speed limit a little bit and, you know, have a crosswalk there.
Well, the police data would also tell us if the curve's dangerous.
I mean, I don't know if that data can just be compiled and emailed out to all of us since we don't have, you know, a meeting coming up for a while. At least we've got some time to, to look at it and, you know, consider what it is.
The thing that worries me, I use that crosswalk all the time to get on the, on the trail, but what I've noticed, that's a straight shot. And I can be sitting there, and cars will whiz through there until that light turns. I mean, totally. And it'll say, stop, 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 stop. But if a truck's coming around the corner, how are they going to stop in time for a crosswalk? I mean, if, if you're coming from the east...
You've got to figure out where you need to put it so that it can be seen.
But that's what I'm saying. Would it be, if I were walking across there, I, I would have to have it straight across, I'm talking from the ambulance entrance, straight across, and then I'd need another on the other side, because I know how kids function. And they don't function one walk, ever, unless you've got some kids I haven't seen.
I have seen in bigger cities with something similar where the lights will start flashing at other points way in the future that basically say, warning, stop ahead, crosswalk ahead, red, you know, stop in 500 feet when flashing red here, or, or these warning, when lights flashing, stop in 500 feet. I imagine that'll add a significant, more than what we had to it, adding more lights. But again, if we're talking, if this, this still may all be cheaper than, and solve the problem that we think is a problem, and that is, I mean, I haven't heard a lot about the past weeks, the problem being cars that we're worried terribly about. I've heard that we're worried about children in the past weeks and months. And yeah, I agree that there's going to be maybe more traffic there, but I don't, I, I don't necessarily know that there will be more traffic than the, especially with the ambulances coming in and out and roaring in and out in the hospital and, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to studying it just to move forward with this at this point.
We need the police.
Do we have any old studies that have been done around the hospital? Nothing was ever done there?
Well, when that hospital was built, that's 50 years ago, so I don't think we have anything.
I figured maybe when Casey's was built in the 90s, I mean...
Yeah, another thing to consider is what are the hours of the grocery store going to be? This isn't going to be a 24-hour grocery store, I don't believe. So what, when will they be open? Nine to nine, eight to 10? I mean, you've also got that to consider as well, that that's not going to be traffic 24 hours a day like it would have been at the hospital. And, you know, if they're not going to open until 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock, that's not going to be, there won't be as much traffic at that time when school is going and there's kids going to school. So, I mean, that, that's something to also consider as well. It's a different type of traffic.
I think to start, we need to police data.
I would agree. To just get some, get some data from, from the chief, find out, you know, what kind of incidents have happened on that curve, if any, how often, you know, they'll have that information. And let's, let's start there and get some information, and then maybe find out, you know, I don't know. Are there any grants that we're overlooking for some, for, well, like, say, routes to school, for crosswalk purposes? Are there some grants out there that we need to be, you know, digging into and looking for that can help us with this cost?
Okay, I don't have any other comments on this particular issue.
So at this point, is the council satisfied to get some data from Chief Warner?
Yes.
How does that sound, Carl? Can we do that? And then we'll go from there?
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on. Roundtable item B, 2015 budget update.
What I've prepared for the council to have a look at is kind of a little synopsis of what our budget situation looks like at this point in the year. Our general fund, as of the 30th of November, our revenue was 71% of estimated. Our property taxes are about at the same point this year as they were last year at this point. Our sales tax, we had estimated $615,000, which is the same as our actual amount for 2013. I think it was a little bit more in 2014. So so far, our sales tax numbers have not quite come up to the peak of 2013. Our gas fund is holding stable. You can see from the graph how our sales go up and down, mostly having to do with weather. Our reserves right down in the gas department are at 32%, so they're in that range that we're looking for, 25 to 50%. Our water fund is marginal. It's stable, but the reserves are not adequate to handle the annual loan payment. That $679,000 payment that comes due every year. So we've been in the hole almost the whole year, except for the last month. We finally broke above zero. We're up at 270,800. Our reserves are at 6.5%, quite below what we really need to have stability in that fund. And the revenues at this point are insufficient to bring it up. Our electric fund, the sales took a big dip from 2013 to 2014 primarily because of mild weather conditions. Our reserves in the electric fund are at 12.3%. Again, that's too low for this fund. The last chart I have there is the pooled cash reserve. You can see that the bottom line, the water in 2011 was in the hole $500,000 when we moved it in. When we made the increase in 2012, that brought us up above zero. But the general trend in reserves is still on the decline. Our gas fund is generally on the increase and is doing fine. Our electric fund, primarily because of EPA mandates and some of the improvements we've made to our system, combined with economic development projects for Gates, have consumed about $2 million. Plus, we put $2 million into reserve for a future energy purchase that has essentially depleted our reserves. So our monthly cash flow is about $850,000. And our 1.3 million reserve right now, if we made the transfers that had been budgeted, would put us in that fund at zero. So we're in a bad condition in our electric fund. Now, I did include some numbers for 2011 through 2014 and 2015 year today. You can kind of see where we stand as far as trends go. I think I'll just highlight, on the second page, at the bottom where it shows transfers, that we have not made the transfer from the electric fund to the general. And we've only made $50,000 out of the, out of the budget of $200,000 from the water fund into general. So that's part of the reason why our general fund is hurting at this point. I included some figures on the gas, the water, and the electric, just so you could see what the trends are. Anyone have any questions? Comments?
Just, just for clarification, Carl, we're not making those transfers because we don't have it, right? Yet.
We're not making the transfers yet because we didn't want to get our, take that money out of the reserves in the electric. And we're kind of waiting to see if we bring in any more revenue before the end of the year. So, since we've still had mild temperatures here and we only have two weeks left, that's not gonna help us out in 2015. So in order to make it through the end of the year, we're gonna have to take a little bit out of electric, a little bit out of wastewater, and a little bit out of gas to try to make some of our transfers. We may have to delay some of those. We just need to make sure that we leave at least a million dollars in our reserves in the electric fund, so that we've got some cash flow in January. So we have a very tight budget right now.
Carl, with the slipping numbers on water then, it looks like we may need to address that sooner rather than later. You know, that trend is decreasing for 13, you know, 13, 14, 15, and depicted in 16, that it just doesn't look like waters do, and, you know, the premiums or, or our rates are not keeping up. I know we had talked about putting into the, I believe it was water that we talked about, having the ECA, the cost adjustment on there.
So I did get ahold of our energy consultant, and he is preparing some numbers for us. We'll have those at our January meeting in terms of, he has the figures now on how we determine our cost, what our cost factors are. We'll give those to him, and then they'll make an adjustment. So we'll include our water and wastewater in the same category as our gas and electric, and there'll be an energy cost adjustment each month.
So this basically, this basically factors in the increased costs of maybe electric and other things, the power of the plant?
Cost of power, cost of chemicals for the water plant, all the things that go into making up that cost figure.
Carl, we, we raised the rates for water in 2011, correct?
By 18%.
18%. And then, so we, looking at the graph, it shows us climbing out of the hole in 2012. And then we've, we've steadily declined since then?
We've made, we made another small adjustment, but again, we don't have a control over all of the commodity prices that go into generating the water. And so our expenditures over revenue is still a negative.
It would make sense to me that if our input costs change, so does everybody else's. I mean, I, it just makes sense.
Is that what is causing that decrease? Is our input costs are, are going up?
Yes. Well, there's, there's two items. One are the input costs, and then the other, if you have a lot of rain during the year, there's less usage, and so the revenues go down. The profit margin decreases. So that is about the same as affects our gas and our electric. Good for the customer, poor for revenue.
And again, we kind of had that wet, cool summer where people aren't out watering their lawns and their plants, and, and everything else was growing pretty well until what, late July, didn't get hot?
But that ECA adjustment you're talking about doesn't cover that, right? It covers the difference...
The ECA, ECA only adjusts the electric and gas funds, and it covers our cost to generate the gas or electric.
So we're basically applying that same thing to the water?
Yes.
It's not, if we have a bad year, we're gonna hike it way up?
Correct.
I mean, that's not...
It's not really intended to jack up the price if we have low consumption. It's, its only purpose is to adjust according to the cost of generating the water, the treatment cost.
Which makes sense, but I'm surprised they don't already do that.
Now, you could use it for that purpose. Like, if our revenue is not coming in for electric, we can adjust the ECA if we needed to generate more revenue.
But it's probably blinded by a certain percent, right? You can't...
But right now, it's controlled by a formula, and so we don't use that without coming to the council and saying, "We need to adjust this ECA by this amount so that we can bring our reserves up over the next four or five years, or 10 years, to where we're back in the range we need to be."
Do we have, do we have the data that shows the difference in what the consumption is costing us and versus what our product to make and get the, the water to the customers is costing us?
I can update those figures. I think it's been probably a year since I've presented that information.
And then the second part to that question, it's been mentioned several times that we're losing revenues due to milder temperatures or, or less rainwater. Are there studies out there that support that as the rainwater drops and our, our consumption at home has dropped? Are we taking into consideration the fact that our daily lives are becoming more efficient, that the consumers are using more efficient washers, and more efficient dryers, more efficient light bulbs? Are we, are we looking at it at, at that level?
So the data I presented before, we looked at rainfall, we looked at actual consumption, and we tried to make a correlation on temperature. So I'll get those numbers updated and bring them back at a meeting in January. Okay, that's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Thank you, Carl.
So we weren't...
Oh. We appreciate that. New business, item A, 221 South Colburn, neighborhood revitalization extension.
This is a request to extend the building permit on, for TNT Business at 221 South According to the city's Neighborhood Revitalization Program, construction must be completed within one year of the application date for the tax rebate. So the request is to agree to a one-year extension on this program.
Do we have any questions, comments?
That's yours, isn't it?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
No, I agree.
I'll second that.
No.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thanks. Item B, cereal malt beverage license renewal.
This is the annual renewal of cereal malt beverage licenses. There's only one addition under the category of sold for consumption on premises. We can add in Coronados. They turned in their application.
I will make a motion to approve the CMB licenses for 26, or for 2016 as amended.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, 2016 city council meeting dates.
This is an adjustment for the 2016 calendar that will move two meetings because of holidays, October 11 and December 26, to move those meetings from the Monday to the following Tuesday.
I'll go ahead and make this motion, but on the 27th, we may want to discuss that similar to what we did on the 28th this year, because we're not meeting on the 28th.
Excuse me, sorry, Donna. I'm still trying to catch up here. What was, what's the documents say? I can't find it here in this pile.
Okay, it's, there are two dates affected by holidays, where the holiday is on a Monday, our scheduled council meeting. And so by our municipal code, we have to formally just change those from a Monday night to a Tuesday night. And if the council decides in December that they're not gonna hold that 26th or 27th meeting, we can decide that at that point.
I'll make that motion to approve the moving of the October 11th and 26th meetings to the following Tuesday evening.
Oh, second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item D, diesel and gasoline bid acceptance.
Okay, we had bids submitted for no lead gasoline for covering 2016, and also for low sulfur diesel. We had two bidders for the Dis Hampel Oil and Leroy Co-op. The low bid was from Leroy Co-op, which, for the fiscal year 2016, in the amount of .068 on gas, and that should say .075 above the rack, rack price on diesel.
Which, what should say, .075?
It says .75. It should be zero, .075.
Oh.
In the recommendation line.
Okay.
Before we, are you done? Go ahead. Sorry.
I'm finished.
Before we vote to take the low bid, like we generally do, this is a $140 difference if we go by approximate gallons to buy local.
That's what my math says, too.
I, I have an issue with that, too. I know a lot of times we've gone with something that's been a little bit higher to keep it local. Not only is this a company within our, our city, it's also within our county, whereas Leroy Co-op's not even in our same county.
Is our math right there? $140 is the overall difference, using these estimations of $65,000?
I didn't figure it out. The challenge there is that if we do this on a regular basis, then we just won't have any bids. People would just say, "Okay, you're gonna give it to the local dealer."
But we didn't give it to the local last year, so...
We didn't. So the low last year was Leroy?
I just don't think it's enough of a difference.
That's just food for thought. I mean, we hadn't voted on it. I'm just, to me, that difference isn't substantial enough to go out of town, because we...
So that's a decision the council could make if you wanted to do that.
I thought we generally said somewhere in the 3% or 4% was kind of the rules that we had played with, tentatively, non-officially. And I haven't done the math on this, because there's a lot of numbers there, but if...
It looks like, it looks like Austin did, he did the math, so...
I hadn't done that. But if it's $140, I do understand the, the problem of, of always offering to the local, but, you know, usually whenever it's something negligible, you know, $140 difference. I know we have to be good stewards of city money, but I think we did the same thing just recently with, was that a police car?
Right.
Where we, where we bought it local.
Right.
We're talking about .004 cents difference on gasoline and .001 cent difference on diesel. If we were talking about, you know, 10 cents, it might be a different story, but we're not.
If it amounted to thousands of dollars, you know, I, I agree, that would make a big difference, but I don't think that this is enough to take it out of town.
Well, I want to completely change the subject here, but while, while we're on the topic of gasoline, with the petroleum down, and it's continued, we expect it to continue to go down. Do we expect, do we expect to notice that in our budget?
Well, if you went back to, well, let's see, I didn't bring the budget sheets. We are down significantly in the vehicle maintenance in the police department. That's where it's a little bit easier to see. So yes, those expenditures for this year are less than what we budgeted.
I will make the motion, we accept Hampel Oil's bid for 2016.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item E, AB3 Crush Rock Bid Acceptance.
We received one bid from Nelson Quarries for our rock for 2016. I think the price is just a little bit less, you can see, or, let's see, it's the same for 2016 as it was in 2015. And that's from Nelson Quarries.
But it's still lower than 13 and 14, so...
Yes, it is.
I'll make the motion that we accept the bid from Nelson Quarries.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item F.
A month ago, I brought up an option of purchasing some wind power. We had Scott Shreve here to make a presentation. This is a power purchase agreement through Westar. They contract with the company that builds the wind farm. So the financial obligation or the risk is Westar's risk. Our consideration is, how much baseload power do we need? And we don't want to be buying a block of power more than what we are assured that we're going to use, even in the mild portions of the year. So our recommendation is based on the price, which the price is confidential, but we are proposing that we purchase a 3-megawatt block of wind power, power purchase agreement with Westar for approximately 3 megawatts, subject to review by the city attorney. I did get the city attorney's review today. There might be a couple of small changes and some wording on the contract, but basically, we're in agreement with the proposal from Westar.
How long does this lock us in for?
This is, I think we start this in 2017, and I think we agreed to three years.
And that would be a set price for those three years?
It is not a set price. It is similar to what we pay, which is a, a minimum price, but there are factors that allow for an adjustment. So it's kind of like what we do with our power that we sell. We have a base price, and then there's a ECA. So there is an initial set price, but there are provisions in the contract for making an adjustment. So it's not a set price for three years.
So I was understanding that part of this price is based on, on subsidies? Is that correct, from the government?
Part of the construction cost to the developers... Part of the construction cost to the developers based on subsidies. That's why some of them are scrambling to build now, because those expire at the end of 2016. But that is their risk and not ours.
But our power consultant is saying that this is a good deal overall for...
It's a good deal overall for us, because the price that we're going to buy this wind power is significantly less than what we pay either Westar or KC P&amp;L or our water, our power out of Arkansas. So that's why we're going with this 3-megawatt block.
But one thing that concerns me, and I like the idea, just to have that in our portfolio, but is wind energy is heavily subsidized. Even maintaining wind farms is heavily subsidized. So if a presidential change or something changes funding for green energy, what is that going to do?
So as far as I understand, our contract and what we've discussed with our South Wind Energy Group over the last several months, that potential will not affect our price here.
I would almost hope, too, after that big summit that they just had on saving our climate and everything, that this is something that whoever becomes president next, I would hope would look toward green energy and keep that as something that, you know, the subsidies stay, because there's so much going on with trying to save...
Say that's a top priority for many of the...
No, I'm just saying I would hope.
I will make a motion to approve the power purchasing agreement with Westar for approximately 3-megawatts of wind energy.
I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thanks. All right. Item G, Carl.
We have an opportunity to apply for an assistance to firefighters grant. The open period for application is December 7 to January 15. The proposal is to apply for a grant that would replace the rural fire district number two pumper, engine 312. It's a 1989 year model. There have been some requests over the last couple of years to put some money aside for replacing our fire vehicles, and because of budgetary reasons, I have not included those set asides into our equipment reserve fund. The fire department is one of those few agencies that still has significant grant funding available. So if we are going to replace a vehicle, the time to do it is if we can get awarded a grant. So this grant is a 95% grant. We pay 5%, and the city's part, actually, the price tag, I think, is going to be closer to $320,000, not $300,000, but if it was $300,000, the city's part would be $15,000. So that matching amount would be paid at the point we would be awarded a grant, not, we don't have to pay that upfront.
Carl, where's this money going to come from if they don't have any equipment reserves, or do they?
If we do have equipment reserves, they're not set aside for this particular purpose. So this money would have to come out of budgeted funds in the fire department.
I mean, it sounds good in theory, but we still have to come up with our percent of this money.
How far under is Fire EMS? Do we have any budget on them this year? Last I had tracked them, and we had been tracking them to look like they were going to be under budget.
We need them to be under budget.
That's a good thing, because we haven't made those transfers to...
How often does this grant, would we have an opportunity to seize the same grant here?
It's a once a year.
So each year we could apply, so if we don't do it this year, it's not like it's a once in a lifetime.
I would still say put it in for the grant this year, because you can learn so much if you get denied from the grant process. Each time you get denied a grant, they will tell you, like, here's why you're denied, and then you learn and you build. $15,000 is a lot of money, but not when you're talking about $300,000. I imagine there's some value to an '89 truck of some sort. I mean, even if you can get...
We can't sell it, though, or give it away to another...
We can sell it as a non-fire apparatus.
What's it going to... Sorry, go ahead.
There's a stipulation on the award process that that fire truck cannot be sold to another fire unit, so...
A 1989 Sidekick, which is basically what it is, with a 454 engine, is worth about $2,500 bucks. So that's for a...
$2,500.
What is it going to cost to equip this after the $325,000? Does this come fully equipped?
They will include in the grant application the amenities that they want to have on it. So supposedly, when it comes, they would include the chainsaws, the other...
Turnkey. It's ready to go rock and roll.
But, I mean, it sounds great, and I'm glad they found the grant, but we just talked about how bad shape our budget is, and this isn't even budgeted.
It's not budgeted. This will impact next year's budget, not this year's, because it would have come out of...
Yeah, but we're kicking the can down the road anyway, not transferring, so next year...
Yeah, but I think we're kicking the can down the road, that if this '89 truck breaks down, and we have to replace a $300,000 truck, I think we should be throwing our, I think we should be rolling the dice and say, hey, I hope I pay $15,000 versus $300,000. I know it's not budgeted, but I mean, with the city, with, you know, we're talking about the price of stores have gone down, and that's one of the big expenses. And I've noticed on the EMS fire expenses, they've been down on running gasoline and running the EMS. And since we've merged the two projects, I'm going to talk of them as one, because it's one department with us, and we've been way down there. I'd like to encourage them to do this, because again, if something happens, I know we don't run it much, but if something does happen to this truck...
Yep.
There's safety issues with it, too.
There's less than 20,000 miles on this truck, though. Am I right?
Yes, 14.
Yeah, well, in July, there was 14,104.
So...
And we just put together a new rule, pumper.
You raise some very valid concerns with budget versus, you know, how long will the truck go and...
The other thing here, and I can't find the wording in the sheet, but, excuse me, I've noticed throughout my short time here, when we are being requested to approve something, that there's always, excuse me, there's always a statement of rising maintenance costs, which generally, that's to be expected when you have something that's aging. But what I would prefer to see in the future, especially when we're requesting things that aren't being budgeted or have not been budgeted, when somebody makes a statement that we have rising budgeted, rising maintenance costs, that we see some type of documentation for this. What are we doing to maintain this? What is the last major expense that we've had on this piece of equipment? What should we expect to be going out in the next year on a, or a 30-year-old vehicle at this point in time? Because it seems to be a cliche that's thrown into every request that we have for equipment is we have rising maintenance costs. And it would be helpful for me to see what are these maintenance costs that we're talking about here, and then we can compare those costs to what our projected investment is. So that's, among other things, not having the money set aside for this. The second concern I have is that we seem to throw around this rising maintenance cost just as a cliche.
Something else I'd like to see on the maintenance cost, well, I'm an equipment guy, that's me, but miles per year, hours per year, something like that, to show the usage, because if you, it's a 1989 model truck with less than 20,000 miles, and I know hours or something, but the whole key to this truck is to be able to move it while you're pumping. So I would like to see miles per year, hours per year on something like this.
And are there places in their budget that they're willing to cut from in order to transfer this money, that, you know, if they've got to have $15,000, are there places that they can cut back in other areas so that that money's still coming out of what they have budgeted, just they're revamping that budget a little bit?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Another point, while we're, I feel like we're beating a dead horse here on equipment, but if we're going to apply for a grant and the deadline for it is January 15, can we maybe get this to the table a little earlier? That way, if we have questions like this, miles and hours questions, maybe they could be answered before we pull the trigger on something? Because right now, I feel rushed, like, we've got to get this in, got to get this in, but I'm sure that this grant has been sitting out there for this whole year, and we're waiting until the deadline to put it in.
So our next meeting is the 14th of January, so we could still bring some of this stuff back to the council.
We have an ambulance that needs to be outfitted, correct? Is that...
There is another grant opportunity for the LifePAC 15s or 21s, whatever they are, for the ambulance, but this only applies to firefighters.
Okay, thank you.
On that grant, I'm sure that'll be a matching grant as well on it, and we don't have allocated funds for that.
And the LifePAC, that grant is through the state of Kansas. This one's through federal.
I just don't see the harm in authorizing them to apply for the grant. We're not out any money. If we do get it, we can have the debate over whether or not we accept the grant. At this point, you're saying, apply for the grant.
Well, you have to make the decision before you apply, because you don't want to get...
Can't turn it down.
You don't want to get awarded and then turn it down.
I would say that we say, because if we get to the 14th and we say, okay, we agree that you can apply for this grant, it's the 14th, write this up tomorrow, I mean...
I think...
I would make a motion that we approve the application for, or approve the ability to, I guess, write or apply for the FEMA grant.
Just a comment before, we could have a special meeting before the 14th, correct? We could give the fire department and the chief time to look into their funds, to see if they have, if they can make any room for this, for the $15,000.
The thing I would...
Give them an opportunity to work for something that they're, I mean, we all need it. I'm not saying that we don't, but we do this a lot. We just spend $15,000 here and $15,000 here, and I just, we've got to be careful, so...
Is fundraising allowed for something like this, when you've got to raise some additional money?
Okay, so I was distracted here. The first meeting in January is the 11th, so that's before the...
Is fundraising allowed? I thought, like, when they went and got their jaws of life, I thought they did some fundraising. Is fundraising allowed to come up with additional funds to help cover the excess cost? So, you know, if there are some shortfalls, I mean, we've got a great community, and this community comes together when they know it's something that's going to benefit everybody. And, you know, you'd be amazed at what you can do with some fundraising efforts also.
One thing I would want to add, too, is we know we're going to accrue the cost of outfitting that ambulance, and we know that there's going to be a matching fee if we don't have to foot it all at once by ourselves. I would just assume apply this $15,000 to something that we know we are going to get. We know we're going to get that, so...
Bob, what do you think?
I think we're going to, this is exactly what I was saying.
I just hesitate that if this goes bad, there's $300,000 the city's liable for.
We've got a little pumper truck we just...
I will throw this out there for you guys. I know if you look at the numbers, that the fire department has come in under budget this year, and I know of some other equipment they need, so I'm not, it would be great to have more information here, you know, how many hours this thing's used for, and you know, what's the wear and tear on the truck and that sort of thing. It doesn't seem like it's used that often. I don't know how many miles you put on a fire truck, but I don't expect a fire truck to have as many miles as one of my vehicles. I actually hope it doesn't, especially a truck of this nature. But I also think that Tim has been sorting through some of his, through his wish list. And so this looks like a pretty good return. So, you know, I've got to put some faith in what he has sent to us, because I know there's other things on his list, so...
Yeah, I wish Tim was here.
I'm going to throw that out there.
You know, 95% is a lot for a grant to pay if all we're coming up with is 5%. You know, that's a huge chunk of grant money.
Yeah, I don't think anybody can argue with that.
Yeah, no, that's, I think it's a great grant.
And even if it is, you know, if it is $15,000 we have to come up with, and if you can sell that to some farmer to use somewhere and they're on their farm for $2,500, well, that just dropped you down. Now you've got $1,250 to raise. So therefore, if you cut some things out of some other places in their budget, you transfer things around, you do some fundraising, by golly, you can raise that kind of money, can't you, Donna?
I'm all for that. I'm all for...
So since our first meeting in January is on the 11th, and that is prior to the deadline of the 15th, we could bring back...
Does that give them enough time to write a grant and, to write the grant and get all the information they need?
They would have to be ready to submit.
I second John's motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think, no.
Paul has a motion?
I made a motion to approve the...
To let him write the grant.
To let him write the grant.
All right.
Further discussion, Mayor?
Why don't you just let him write the grant, just don't send it in?
Yeah, there's no harm, there's no harm in that part of it, having it, that's being prepared, unlike what we're dealing with right now, is getting something four weeks before they want it. That's being unprepared. I mean, don't let somebody else's procrastination become your emergency is a pretty good motto to live by.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
Is that, that's not to submit it, though, right? That's just to write it, or what?
No, it's to apply for it.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. A lot of good points in that discussion.
Well, okay, it passes 4 to 3. I'll still have them bring back the information at the next council meeting.
Thanks, Carl. We appreciate it. Moving on, unfinished business on a municipal code review.
This is just another segment of what we've been reviewing in our municipal code. This is one of the sections that has some dollars to it. It's the proposed changes in our fee structure. Actually, the ones that, except for only one or two items, all of these changes in the utility rental or usage rates on service vehicles in the water, electric, street, gas, they were all presented to the council before as part of our administrative policy. So these have been in place for about six months. Actually, I think it was in March when these were presented.
I didn't really see anything that jumped out at me. Carl, do you have any points that you wanted to talk about on that?
Well, I might just reiterate, part of the reason why we adjusted our rates on usage, we get requests from other agencies, mostly municipalities, to do some work, say, to help come fix our power lines, come to fix this water leak, come help us on another thing. And if our rates are significantly below a market average, then we find that they are requesting us continually, and we don't get our own job done. So we brought our rates up to about what the market cost is, and then they can decide whether they want to use us or hire a private contractor. So that's kind of what our rates are set at. These would also apply if there was some type of emergency where there's FEMA funding. These would be the billing rates through FEMA.
Can you talk to me a little bit about $34,187, the bond amount for fortune tellers and clairvoyants? That one seems really high. I just noticed that. I'm kidding. But that's what that one is. It's for $5,000 is the fee if you are a clairvoyant or a fortune teller.
There's some pretty interesting things in our municipal code.
Do we have one here?
Permanently fees. But either way, I will go ahead and approve, make the motion to approve the proposed fees. Do you want this approved today or just...
We really don't need to have approval at this point. It'll come back. If you have any comments, things you want adjusted, we can do that, but otherwise, it will come back for formal approval in the form of an ordinance.
Excellent. Thank you, Carl. I appreciate it. Moving on. Well, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas. It's been a great year. We've had some ups and downs for sure. John, what do you have anything for us tonight?
Again, reiterate Merry Christmas. Safe travels out there. Hopefully, the weather stays nice for the remainder of everyone's travels through the New Year at least. Thank everyone for the gifts. It's very, very nice. It really does make you feel appreciated. And again, I know we have some heated discussions up here, but it's often just different visions on what we think is in the best interest. And I think, you know, that's why we're all here as a group, and I like having the discussions and having all these different voices and opinions. Thank you all for your time as well these years, and look forward to working with you in the New Year.
Thanks, John. Nancy?
First and foremost, my thoughts and prayers are with Beverly and her family, and, you know, I hope she has a very speedy recovery and just really praying for her. This, it's got to be hard, hard on everybody. So, and everybody have, you know, have a Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year, enjoy your friends and family, treasure every minute with them, and safe travels to everybody. And thank you for the chocolates and cheesecakes.
Thank you, Nancy. Bob?
Same thing here. I'd like to thank everybody for the gifts, and it's been a big pleasure to be with you guys all year.
Thank you, Bob. Dawn?
I'd just like to confirm everything else that everyone else has said, so I don't have to repeat.
Perfect. Thank you, Dawn. Austin?
Yeah, like Don said, it's tough being down on the list because everybody steals your thunder. So thanks for the gifts and have a Merry Christmas. Oh, I hope everybody got out to the Jocksnitch sale. Those tennis shoes will smell up the armory for months to come. So they're brand new too, but they stink. I don't know what it is. Anyways, I hope they bought a lot of them, so anyways, that's all.
Thank you. Sandy?
Merry Christmas to everyone, and echoing all the sentiments. And thank you, Mr. Sorenson for the candy, and Mr. Johnson for the cheesecake. I hope everyone has a wonderful 2016, and God bless all of us.
Thank you, Sandy. Aaron?
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas. Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. And I guess it was Bob Jr. that gave us these sweets. Thanks, Bob. I don't have anything else to add.
Excellent. Thank you. Carl?
I don't have anything else to bring up. Merry Christmas.
All right. Thank you, Carl. We sure appreciate your efforts. Dawn?
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
I'd second that motion.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.